Meeting will come to order, please. Roll call.
Commissioner Abraham? Commissioner Gault?
Present.
Commissioner Rhodes?
Here.
Commissioner Wilson?
Present.
Mayor Kahler?
Present. Do we have anyone in the audience that would like to do the invocation for us tonight? Mark, would you like to do that? No? Mark, you would do a good job.
Oh.
Rick, thank you. Thank you. And Carol, if you'll do the pledge of allegiance, please.
Let's pray. Heavenly Father, we thank you for this opportunity that we can gather together as leaders, elected officials, citizens that take an interest in our community. Heavenly Father, every decision is a weighted decision, some good, some bad. But Heavenly Father, we just ask that you lead us to guide the community such that we make a better community for all and an equal community for all. Heavenly Father, we also ask that you forgive us of our sins and where we fail you for we ask for forgiveness, and it's in Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to its republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I attended the POW MIA service at Dolly McNutt Plaza, and I asked them if they would get a POW MIA flag for us to have on the podium. So they're going to work on that for us. We can put it in the other corner.
Great.
Okay, are there any additions or deletions, City Manager?
No ma'am.
Can I have a proclamation tonight? Laura, how are you? And do you have someone with you? I'm sorry. Mindy, hi. So, the proclamation, if you all would like to come up to the podium, I'll read it for you and then hand it to you if you'd like to say anything after I finish reading. "To all to whom these presents shall come, whereas working women constitute seventy-one million of the nation's workforce and strive to serve their communities, their states, and their nation in a professional civic and cultural capacity; and whereas women own businesses account for thirty percent of all U.S. business generating one point nine trillion in sales and employing nine point two million people; and whereas the major goal of the Business and Professional Women's Foundation are to promote equality for all women, to help create better conditions for working women through the study of social, educational, economic, and political aspects of our country; and whereas the Paducah River City Business and Professional Women's Organization advocates for the respect and appreciation of all working women by spotlighting the achievements and contributions of working women; and whereas the Paducah River City Business and Professional Women's Organization work to provide better working conditions, better education, and equal pay for all women throughout the city of Paducah, now therefore I, Gail Kahler, Mayor of Paducah, Kentucky, do hereby proclaim October seventeenth through the twenty-first, twenty sixteen Business Women's Week. In Paducah, and I urge all citizens in Paducah, Kentucky, and all civic and fraternal groups, all educational associations, all news media, and other community organizations to join this salute to working women. We encourage and promote the celebration of the achievements of all business and professional women as they contribute daily to our economic, civic, and cultural purposes. Will all working women please stand?" Very good.
Laura and I are officers in Paducah River City Business and Professional Women. I'm the president, and Laura's the vice president. So we wanted to thank you for taking the time to recognize us and just as we continue to work on equal pay, we'd appreciate everyone's support. Our organization meets the second Tuesday of every month at the Country Club, starting at eleven-thirty, so we would invite you all to join us.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Got a great organization there. Thank you. Commissioner Rhodes, will you do the minutes for us? Do you have that?
I have them.
You have it? Okay. Commissioner Gault, go ahead.
I move that the reading of the minutes for the September thirteenth, two thousand sixteen City Commission meeting be waived and that the minutes of said meeting prepared by the City Clerk be approved as written.
Second.
City Clerk?
Commissioner Gault?
Aye.
Commissioner Rhodes?
Aye.
Commissioner Wilson?
Aye.
Mayor Kahler?
Aye.
So you'll read Richards until he gets back. Okay. Commissioner Gault?
Say where he is. He's at the law.
Yes.
For split recognition. Waiting to sing.
Heartland Baptist, yes. Commissioner Gault?
I move that the following documents and bids be received and filed. Documents Communication Service Agreement with Lone Oak Fire Protection District, Communication Service Agreement with Hendren Fire Protection District, bids for engineering public works, fire station number two plumbing renovation project, MP Lawson Construction LLC, Midstates Construction LLC, two thousand seventeen front-loading refuse truck, McBride Mac Stringfellow Municipal Equipment.
Second.
City Clerk?
Commissioner Gault?
Aye.
Commissioner Rhodes?
Aye.
Commissioner Wilson?
Aye.
Mayor Kahler?
Aye.
Commissioner Rhodes, you have the first municipal order?
Yes ma'am. Upon recommendation of the City Manager, the Board of Commissioners of the City of Paducah, order that personal changes on the attached list be approved.
Need a second.
Second.
Okay. Thank you. Hi Steve.
Good evening. Don't miss anything. Of significance, we have a police officer hire on this and also the promotion of Martin Russell to Human Resources Director.
I mentioned Mr. Russell is in Louisville today and could not be here, but we'll have him come forward at the next meeting to...
Okay, good. Okay. Thank you. City Clerk?
Commissioner Gault?
Aye.
Commissioner Rhodes?
Aye.
Commissioner Wilson?
Aye.
Mayor Kahler?
Aye.
Commissioner Wilson?
I move that a municipal order entitled, a municipal order authorizing the application for a twenty sixteen Transportation Alternatives Program, or TAP, grant in the amount of seven hundred and thirty-six thousand, six hundred and forty-six dollars through the Kentucky Transportation Cabinet for sidewalk curb and gutter improvements in the Fountain Avenue neighborhood be adopted.
Second.
Good evening, Mayor and Commissioner. As we transfer from the Fountain Avenue neighborhood area to the next neighborhood, we would like to go ahead and proceed with a TAP application, which is from the Transportation Alternative Program for the replacement of curb and gutter existing concrete, resetting some of the existing granite curb, and also doing some sidewalks. Specifically, we're talking about twenty-eight hundred square yards of sidewalk, thirty-one hundred feet of granite curbing, and more than twenty-eight hundred total feet of concrete curb and gutter. All these improvements were part of the original Fountain Avenue neighborhood plan, were outlined. Once again, since we're transitioning, now is a good time to take that project on.
We've been doing some in there now, so this would just allow to do more, to finish up.
Commissioner Wilson, what we have been doing, it's been doing across the board. For example, when we do our annual resurfacing, we do resurfacing and street rehabilitation throughout all neighborhoods, and this particular grant application will put a full focus on completing all that what is necessary within the Fountain Avenue area. We typically, like when we budget money for our street rehabilitation, we spread that all over town and we don't put it all in one location. We want neighborhoods to have some improvement all over. Whereas this application will allow us to focus the effort through the TAP application on this one particular part of town, and it will appear that the focus is here, but we still will be doing paving and work all over town, but this is just to accelerate that if we get this grant.
And I think this is also very similar to what we did in lower town. We also receive transportation monies for the infrastructure improvements in lower town as part of that redevelopment process.
Yep, Paducah area transit was very helpful in receiving those funds for lower town. And the lighting was part of that too?
That's correct.
Good deal. Thank you.
Thank you.
We'll go on to our ordinances adoption. We've already had the first reading of these. Commissioner Abraham?
Mayor, can we call the roll on that?
Oh, sure.
Okay. Commissioner Abraham?
Aye.
Commissioner Gault?
Aye.
Commissioner Rhodes?
Aye.
Commissioner Wilson?
Aye.
Mayor Kahler?
Aye.
Commissioner Abraham?
I move that the Board of Commissioners adopt an ordinance entitled, an ordinance of the City of Paducah, Kentucky approving a promissory note extension agreement and addendum to real estate mortgage among the City of Paducah, Kentucky, McCracken County, Kentucky, and the Greater Paducah Economic Development Council with respect to a public project generally known as Riverport West, and authorizing the executive same. This ordinance is summarized as follows. This ordinance authorizes the City of Paducah, Kentucky to approve a promissory note extension agreement and addendum to real estate mortgage by and between the City of Paducah, Kentucky, the County of McCracken, Kentucky, and the Greater Paducah Economic Development Council. Pursuant to the agreement, the city and the county agreed to extend the maturity date of the indebtedness due and owing by GPEDC unto the city and county until June thirtieth, two thousand and twenty, which indebtedness are evidenced by promissory notes dated September eighteenth, two thousand and seven, in the original principal amount of six hundred thousand dollars, and promissory notes dated December nineteenth, two thousand and eight, and are secured by real estate mortgages. This ordinance approves the form of the agreement present to the Board of Commissioners of the city, and such changes therein shall, as shall not be adverse to the city and may be approved by the mayor and city clerk.
Second. City Clerk?
Commissioner Abraham?
Aye.
Commissioner Gault?
Aye.
Commissioner Rhodes?
Aye.
Commissioner Wilson?
Aye.
Mayor Kahler?
Aye.
Commissioner Gault?
I move that the Board of Commissioners adopt an ordinance entitled, an ordinance accepting the bid of MP Lawson Construction LLC for the Noble Park Tennis Courts restroom facility construction project, and authorizing the mayor to execute a contract for such construction and change Order One to such contract allowing the city to make direct purchase of the modular restroom facility. This ordinance is summarized as follows. This ordinance authorizes the mayor to enter into contract with MP Lawson Construction LLC, a Kentucky limited liability company, in the amount of one hundred fifty-two thousand, nine hundred thirty-six dollars for the Noble Park Tennis Courts restroom facility construction project, and subsequently authorizes the mayor to enter into change Order One to said contract, reducing the contract price due to contractor to the amount of sixty-one thousand, two hundred fifty dollars and six cents. Further, the ordinance authorizes the Director of Park Services to make a direct purchase of the modular restroom facility from Hunter Nep Shield Company for eighty-six thousand, six hundred thirty-seven dollars.
Second.
City Clerk?
Commissioner Abraham?
Aye.
Commissioner Gault?
Aye.
Commissioner Rhodes?
Aye.
Commissioner Wilson?
Aye.
Mayor Kahler?
Aye.
Well, we've waited to get this done for a long time, haven't we, Mark? So it's great. We've got good things going on in Noble Park with the bank stabilization and the restrooms for the tennis courts. Good. Commissioner Rhodes?
Okay. I move that the Board of Commissioners adopt an ordinance entitled, an ordinance accepting the proposal of Wilson Office Solutions for the purchase of furniture for the Police Department Annex located at fourteen-ten Broadway, and authorizes the mayor to execute a contract for same. This ordinance is summarized as follows, that the City of Paducah accepts the bid of Wilson Office Solutions in an amount not to exceed forty-two thousand, one hundred twenty-seven dollars and thirteen cents for the purchase of furniture for the Police Department Annex located at fourteen-ten Broadway, and authorizes the mayor to execute a contract for same.
Second. City Clerk?
Commissioner Abraham?
Aye.
Commissioner Gault?
Aye.
Commissioner Rhodes?
Aye.
Mayor, Commissioner Wilson?
Aye.
Mayor Kahler?
Aye.
Okay, we have some ordinances for introduction tonight, so we have a reading and we'll vote on these next week. So our first one is Commissioner Wilson.
I move that the Board of Commissioners introduce an ordinance, an ordinance of the City of Paducah, accepting a twenty fifteen, twenty sixteen Assistance to Firefighters Matching Grant from the Kentucky Office of Homeland Security, Federal Emergency Management Agency for the Paducah Fire Department, and authorizing the mayor to execute any and all agreements relating to same. This ordinance is summarized as follows, that the City of Paducah hereby accepts grant funds in the amount of eighty-seven thousand, four hundred and fifty-five dollars through the Kentucky Office of Homeland Security, Federal Emergency Management Agency for a twenty fifteen, twenty sixteen Assistance to Firefighters Matching Grant Award for the Fire Ground Survival Program sponsored by the Paducah Fire Department. Further, the mayor is hereby authorized to execute a grant agreement and all documents relating to same.
Second.
Hi Steve.
Hi, this is, good evening, Mayor and Commissioners, City Manager. This is great news for us. We haven't received a FEMA grant in a little while, or an AFG grant, so we're extremely excited about this. This is a course about fire ground survival, but an extra added benefit that we get out of it is the props that they use to put us through the course, and we get overtime and train the trainers out of it as well. So it's really a well-rounded deal for us, that we're going to get a lot of long-term value out of, and we're extremely excited to receive it.
Great. Thank you. Commissioner Abraham?
I move that the Board of Commissioners introduce an ordinance entitled, an ordinance accepting the bid of McBride Mac, Inc., for sale to the city of one new twenty seventeen front-loading refuse collection chassis and body for use by the solid waste collection system, and authorizing the mayor to execute a contract for same. This ordinance is summarized as follows, the City of Paducah accepts the bid of Mac McBride, Inc., in the amount of two hundred and thirty-three thousand, one hundred and nineteen dollars, for sale to the city of one new twenty seventeen front-loading refuse collection chassis and body, and authorizes the mayor to execute a contract for same.
Second. Hi Rick.
Hello, Mayor, Commissioner, this is just natural attrition of your existing fleet. One truck in, one truck out. Our front loaders are those trucks that pick up the dumpsters, lift it, lift it over the top of the truck and dump it. It's part of our commercial fleet, where we do our commercial pickups.
How many years did you get out of the?
About eight.
The retiring unit.
There, it's a pretty, I guess, degrading environment, those trucks. I'm talking about, as far as the wear, the rams on the bodies, it has two big hydraulic rams that are inside that actually compact, and you get a lot of wear on the inside of the chassis and also the box that's on it, so.
Typically, what happens to a retired garbage front loader?
There are communities, or there are, not communities, there are people that will buy them on gov deals, and they may rebuild them. They may re, I want to say, re-build it for another purpose. Take the body off and put a different chassis, a different purpose, repurpose the truck, is the word.
So we do sell this? This is...
Yes, we do sell this. We do sell them, and what happens to them after that, we have no idea what happens with those.
Less the trade-in.
Less the trade-in.
Kick the trade.
When, I will tell you that, I think in about two thousand and ten or eleven, we had a truck that was giving us a lot of trouble. It was like four years old, and it was constantly in the shop, and we got an estimate on what, you know, it would get on an auction, and they told us it would get like fifty thousand dollars, and the same company that told us that gave us a hundred and five thousand dollars for that truck. So it's interesting what you find out, but it was a mechanically, I guess, that particular truck was a mechanically doomed truck. It always stayed in the shop, so we moved it out.
I think if I sold some cars like that, it would be... Thank you, Rick.
I think I've bought some like that.
You might have.
Not from you, of course.
Not from you. We would never do that to you.
Okay. So Commissioner Gault, you have the next one?
I move that the Board of Commissioners introduce an ordinance entitled, an ordinance accepting the bid of MP Lawson Construction LLC for plumbing renovation for fire station number two, and authorizing the mayor to execute a contract for same. This ordinance is summarized as follows, the City of Paducah accepts the bid of MP Lawson Construction LLC in the amount of seventy-four thousand, seven hundred eighty-seven dollars for plumbing renovations to fire station number two, located at three thousand Wayne Sullivan Drive, and authorizes the mayor to execute a contract for same.
Second.
Mayor, Commissioner, this particular one, I know Chief Kyle's Fire Department Suppression Team will be especially proud of this because they have been operating at fire station number two. It's out on Wayne Sullivan Drive for some time with a limited plumbing system. That fire station was built in the mid-seventies. Its actual sanitary sewer line that goes out to the main had totally rotted, and it just so happens that that fire station is built on a concrete slab, it doesn't have a crawl space under it, so we physically have to go in and cut the floor out to put in new sanitary sewer main. And then also, we're doing some upgrades in the restroom facilities to make it more, I guess, home-friendly, because some of the facilities there are pretty much antiquated, so we're taking an opportunity to upgrade the bathroom while we're doing the sanitary improvements.
So the rusty shower stall goes away?
We have several things that go away, and I think our fire teams may be temporarily displaced while that work's going on, but it's been very much needed, and so I know they're looking forward to having it totally restored.
It's been rumored that the crew there will no longer be referred to as the Bucket Brigade.
Well, they have a piece of plywood, they have a piece of plywood over the hole in the floor where our access point is to some of our cleaning supplies there, so I know it'll be a welcome project for our fire department.
Okay. Yes, thank you. Commissioner Rhodes?
Okay, I move that the Board of Commissioners introduce an ordinance entitled, ordinance amending sections fourteen thirty-two, dogs permitted at special community events, restrictions of chapter fourteen, animals of the Code of Ordinances of the City of Paducah, Kentucky. This ordinance is summarized as follows, the city hereby amends sections fourteen dash thirty-two, dogs permitted at special community events, restrictions of chapter fourteen, animals of the Paducah Code of Ordinances, to eliminate the requirement that dogs be restrained by open ended muzzles at special community events.
Second. Okay. This has been brought to our attention by someone that lives downtown, and when we passed this original ordinance, Patience and I were actually asked by Mayor Paxton at the time I was first on the commission, and to look at the ordinance, because we had some other issues involved, such as the number of limiting the number of dogs that you could have in a residence, and Patience had just, Patience and Bill had just moved here, and they had looked into that before they moved here to make sure they would be okay with their whippets. And then this came up, so, and Patience, I can't remember who else was on that committee, can you? And the gentleman that brought this issue to the City Commission at that time, there was also a problem with the number of dogs on a vacant lot. So I think we have a really good ordinance, except the muzzle portion of it, which is very hard to enforce. It makes people angry when they come to an event and they're turned away for different reasons, and I want everyone to understand that special permits, when we permit at an event in Paducah, it can be included in the permit, no dogs at this particular festival, which I think, Carol, if you want to speak to that?
I mean, that's basically the way it is, depending on the event coordinator, they...
Right.
Jeff, do you...
I think the only thing that might be absent from that is any specific enforcement authority in the ordinance, so I think if that's something that the commission wants to have available, then I would suggest we review the ordinance and determine if we need to put that authority in the ordinances so that we can enforce it. I know in the past when that has been granted, if you will, that it's obviously given the event organizers the felt ability to ask people to, you know, take their dog out, but I'm concerned that with the lack of specific language in the ordinance about it, that the actual enforcement ability, if there was resistance, I'm not sure if it's there, so we'd want to look into that.
And we're not talking about a muzzle here, we're just talking about at special events...
Correct.
That they put in the special event permit that no dogs are allowed at this event. So Patience, I called you when this first came up, and the other thing is when we passed this, and that was, I told the reporter eight years, but actually it's been ten years ago? Ten?
It was two thousand and two.
Yeah. So it was longer than I thought. And, you know, at that time, we didn't have very many people living downtown. We have more people that live downtown now, and we expect to have many, many more people living downtown in the next five to ten years. So it became apparent that when you took your dog out to go to the bathroom with so many events downtown, you're actually breaking the law if they didn't have a muzzle on, so...
And I think, I think the reason the muzzle wording was put into the original ordinance by the committee was, at the old downtown after dinner events, the Greyhound Rescue Group used to come down with their greyhounds to try to promote finding homes for them, and of course, greyhounds love muzzles, that's, they live in them, and that means playtime for them. So that was a way to allow the greyhounds still to be at the downtown after dinner city events, but to discourage people from bringing dogs who were being used in intimidating ways. People who were bringing dogs who looked aggressive as a way to intimidate people. So that was a way to solve that particular problem. I think the whole idea of aggressive dogs being at downtown events is pretty much a moot point now. I don't see that as a problem at all, and we still would have the three-foot lead requirement, which would keep any dog tethered fairly closely. I would strongly suggest that the commission not suggest any kind of breed-specific language, because that's proven not to work in cities all over this country. A Chihuahua can put a big hurt on your Achilles tendon, and pit bulls can be loving wonderful family members, so that's not the idea, that's not the direction you want to go. So that was why the original language was put in about the muzzles. There is no more Greyhound Rescue Group, there is no downtown after dinner. The wrong kind of muzzles were being used, it was really dangerous for dogs anyway, there wasn't any reinforcement. So I don't think anyone in the dog community would have any objection to that language being removed from the ordinance.
Do you feel like the three-foot leash requirement provides enough safety?
It helps some, and mostly what the three-foot leash requirement does is it keeps, hopefully, the retractable leads either locked or absent. The retractable leads are way more dangerous than any dog is, because they act like the tripwires in the old western movies, where you'd see all the cavalry charge and the horses would all tip over. That's what they do to people when the operator doesn't know how to use a retractable lead. So either that retractable lead has to be locked at three feet, or you have to be on a three-feet lead, and then you're not getting a leash wrapped around people's feet. And as far as, if you have an aggressive dog, I guess I would love to see some public information disseminated about how miserable any dog in the world, other than a trained service dog, would be at an event like barbecue on the river, where the sidewalk is twenty to forty degrees hotter than where we are, where it smells like a giant carcass, and where, from a dog's point of view, all it is is a mass of people who are going to step on them. So I would love to have some public education... So I would love to have some public education in that regard so that people don't bring dogs to events that are just nightmares for them. But as far as the three-foot lead goes, the main safety factor in that is that people can't trip over the lead and dogs can't get between people's legs to make them trip.
And there needs to be public awareness too of other, other issues of picking up after your dog and being courteous on the greenway trail. I've had some people say, you know, you know, I'll be walking or running on the greenway trail and somebody will come toward me maybe with two dogs on a, a lead and they want, they will not just kind of give to the side. And it intimidates the person walking or running. So, you know, just asking people to be more considerate with their dogs for other people's comfort as well as a dog's comfort.
And I think it's a matter of public education and awareness. I think people can be very blind about the effect their dogs might have on somebody else. And I know when we moved here, the whole idea of cleaning up after your dog was, what?
No one did it.
No one did it.
Thank you, Patience.
Well, I tried to do it for the whole city for a while. But it, it, it's just public awareness and I think the news has gotten out a lot. You see a lot less evidence of people not picking up than you used to. And the fact that the lower town neighborhood association put cleanup stations around, that was helpful. And I think, do we have one in Schultz Park?
We have one at the gazebo.
At the gazebo, okay.
Yeah, the bits that people.
Those help. Those really help because people go, oh, didn't know about that. So I think that all helps. I think it's been, you know, dog-friendly cities attract all kinds of people to them because people want to have a place where their dogs are as welcome as they are.
So do you think this helps, obviously to make?
I think, I think it's, yes, I would certainly personally recommend scratching the muzzle ordinance as it, the muzzle part of the language in that ordinance as it is. People are using the wrong kinds of muzzle, muzzles which hold a dog's mouth shut, which means they can't pant, which means you're going to have a dead dog someday. And instead of the basket muzzle, which they needed to have. And I think that we'd be better served with public education than a muzzle ordinance that nobody follows anyway.
If you look on, I, I went on to National Tennessee in Austin, Texas and just run over their codes and said, so I just Googled dog muzzle and.
Not there.
They're not there.
No. Owensboro and Bowling Green do not have that in their ordinance. So, you know, we are one of very, very few if, I couldn't find any that had the muzzle.
Yeah. I think it was well-intended, but it's better to get that out of there.
Well, yeah, I chimed in on this last Tuesday and I think one of the, just starting a conversation, a gentleman had his dog out for his normal walk and I think it was on a Thursday and an event was going on. And the, the event was kind of like in his line of where he typically walked his dog. And he was advised to muzzle his, his dog. And the comments in the, in the correspondence that I read was that, that the city does a poor job of policing that. Some areas of town, if it, if it's an event, special event going on, it's, it's not, it's okay not to have a muzzle. And, and I think one of the statements was made early on is that, okay, if, if we're going to enforce this, we need to enforce it. If we're not, then we need to get rid of it. So I'm looking at, I, I'm a dog lover. Blue is like, he's like my buddy. And, uh, the other night, actually, I said, if I die, I want to come back as you. Because you, I mean, it, it's great. However, when you talk about, when you're thinking about the, the muzzle and you mentioned public education on, on muzzles, what type to use. And I think responsible pet owners will make every effort to do, to do that, to get whatever is best for their dog because they are their family. They get sick, you take them to the doctor. However, when you have an event, like you mentioned, like barbecue on the river, there's like wall-to-wall people. And some people aren't real up to speed on, on, on dog etiquette. And when you have that many people pressed, pressed against each other and reach out, like people walk up to your dog and doesn't know the temperament of the dog and just want to pet the dog. Or if the dog snips them, then there's, there's an issue. So I, I agree with you. I applaud you on that education part. But I'm looking at, why did you put the ordinance in? And you've given some history on that. I look at it from the standpoint is that it's for the, the protection of the dog if it's a proper muzzle and the public. I won't, I don't, personally, I don't bring my dog out when there's an event with thousands of people. Because not, it's not that I, I, I don't love my dog and it's, it's not.
It's that you do love your dog.
Exactly. So I, I think, and some people, they, they make that decision to go out and as more folks, as the mayor alluded to, rightfully comes, comes to live downtown and we have these events, there're going to be more and more people at these events. So I don't see, I don't see the portion of the ordinance with the muzzle, anything wrong with that. You see, the thing of it is, it goes back to the pet owner, them being responsible. Now, we can say, well, no one's going to do it, so let's just get rid of it. Well, it seems to be a lot of that going around this country these days. Well, no one's doing it, so let's just, let's just not demand it. So I'm, I don't see, I don't have a problem with the, with the language as it is in the ordinance. I would strongly suggest that a responsible pet owner get the appropriate muzzle for their animal that they, that they say they love so much and, and move forward from there. Now, we have events where we have, where we highlight our, our dogs. In the dog park, we have things, if it's an event like that, don't need the muzzle. But some of the things that we have going on downtown, moving forward, I think it's in the best interest of the animal and the people attending the event if the right type of muzzle is used. So taking it out, I don't, I don't see how that's a benefit to the animal or the public.
Why are you looking at me like that?
I just happened to turn my, this chair's got a swivel on.
Well, I think, I think the, I think the problem is that it is extremely hard to enforce. I know that they tried to think of all kinds of different ways to get around this for the Lower Town Arts Festival. Again, it's just so hot for that festival. There's lots of people. It's not as much food as barbecue on the river, but there's food. And so they thought they would have a public crating area where you could drop your dog out off and put it in a crate under a tree. And I was like, no, 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 no. Because there are a lot of dogs who are never crated. They're going to overheat because they're frantic because they watch their owners leave them in this strange place. That's not going to work. I think, I, 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 I think that the, the muzzle ordinance, as you said, it's not enforced uniformly. And how would we? I mean, how would you do that? We don't have, do we have the police capacity to? So then someone who does have their dog muzzled walks next to someone who doesn't have their dog muzzled and they're, what's this? So I think that is the problem.
Take it.
I think, what, if you can get the police to write one and then people say, oh, downtown's so unfriendly, I'm not going back. So I think.
Or downtown is, is thoughtful. That's why they have that writing in the, in the ordinance. I mean, you're going to get people that agree with it and people that don't. So, you know, I guess that's what, that's a decision we're going to make regarding the language in the.
But I understand, and I mean, that's part of why it was written in the first place. But my experience has been, in the meantime, that I haven't seen it uniformly enforced at all. And that what I do see, which absolutely terrifies me, is I see the cloth muzzles, mesh muzzles, the dogs can't pant. And I'm just thinking, oh, that's bad.
Yes, it is.
When you looked at the, the other cities that you said did not have dog ordinance, did they allow, I mean, the muzzle? Did they allow dogs at their festivals?
I don't think it was speci- specifically written into their animal ordinance about festivals.
The only thing they spoke about were vicious dogs. And there was a separate, about vicious dogs and just stay at home.
So like this weekend, I mean, this is not going to take effect for this weekend anyway, but if it were at barbecue on the river, are they, I mean, they're allowed there? So, or at, at, I see them, I'm, I, that's specific to that, but they're allowed at the arts festival because I've seen them. I was standing in line with somebody.
Not without a muzzle. It says on the entrance.
Without a muzzle, they're not supposed to be, but they're there.
They're there.
With and without.
Do you want to, do you want to, let's, let's go, let's go there together? Thank you. No, it, it's fine and we need to address this because Jeff brought up a good point. And, and we've dealt with this for several years. I mean, literally, a, a, and it has evolved. And as Patience just brought up, one of the things that we used to deal with is when it, I mean, the ticketing was never really an issue. It would be as the dog would come in, you would have one that would be muzzled and you would have another one that would not be muzzled. And the police tried very diplomatically to say, we would, we really need the dog muzzled. And we would try to have a vendor there that sold the proper muzzle. But if you don't have the dog muzzled, then you need to leave the festival area because that was the way it was enforced, not so much a ticketed issue. But now, go ahead.
Well, you're, you're exactly right. We don't, we try in all efforts not to issue citations for these type of offenses on the first time. What happens is when somebody brings their animal into the, their dog specifically into the event and we are made aware of it or we notice it or something like that, we have that conversation. It goes back to the educational aspect of what we're trying to do. We ask them to comply with that and we send them to the vendor over there to either buy the muzzle or ask them to take the animal home. Sometimes they comply, most of the time they comply and/or that small percentage, they go out one exit and then come back in the next exit and we're dealing with them again. The repeat offenders, I guess you would list them as that in this particular case, are the ones that we unfortunately have to issue a citation for, for this ordinance. I think unfortunately what's happening here is that we're getting a perception that Paducah is not a drug, dog-friendly community because of a muzzle. I think that's very unfortunate. Paducah has made great strides. A dog park, there are a lot of businesses downtown that allow animals in. You know, I think it's a very pet-friendly community. You know, I'm a dog owner myself. I understand that we're not talking about Patience Renzulli's dogs. I mean, they're very well behaved. We're talking about that small percentage of animals that do not need to be at these events, regardless of whether they're behaving at home or not. They're brought into an atmosphere that they're not familiar with. They're smelling things they've never smelt. They're around large sounds that they've never been exposed to and they're going to behave differently. You have to expect that out of an animal. And it may be as simple as that young two-year-old or three-year-old child wanting to walk up and pet the dog and the dog not knowing what's going on. Or that child grabbing the dog's tail. You know, the first time I was ever bit by a dog was a dash hound. So you can't tell me it's a certain breed of dog. It's a behavior in the dog that the dog has to protect itself is all it is. What I would ask the commission to do is if we're going to look at making an amendment to this ordinance, I think we need to step back. I think we need to be a little bit broader here and talk about reptiles, snakes, those type things that are being brought into these permitted, permitted events that cause alarm. I'm not saying that they're aggressive animals. I'm saying they cause alarm to other individuals. An eight-foot boa constrictor, which was brought to one of our events at one point, is a concern. It's a concern of mine because there again, that animal particularly is being brought into an environment that's not, it's not familiar with. So that's just my percent, my, my point on this entire conversation here. There, you've also got sanitary issues, you've got so on and so forth involved in this, so.
And the two points, I mean, interrupt, now cut you off, but the two points that I, I was going to make is exactly what the chief said. The bite that we had to deal with at barbecue on the river was not from a dog, it was from a rabbit. So that is one thing that we, right out of the gate. So it, it is a much broader issue than just a dog and, and just a muzzle there. And in addition to that, like at that festival, the other thing that, that we have to consider is we're dealing with a health department. I mean, e- each booth is treated as a restaurant. You don't take your dog or your animal up into a restaurant.
Unless you're in Europe.
Yeah. Correct, but we're not. You know, I mean, we have to, we have to go through that. So I mean, it's a much broader issue. So I think that there are a lot of other things that we have to consider than just this very linear, if you will, subject.
Well, I mean, this ordinance just deals with dogs.
Correct, it does, but.
So it would actually be another ordinance to deal with reptiles and that?
We have a broader animal ordinance, don't we?
Does it prohibit that?
Broader than what we've just.
Well, I think what the chief is specifically talking about, and I've heard this from others on staff that are associated with these things, is the presence of animals brought in by people at these events. So it's kind of the same issue as what prompted the muzzle, if you will. There's, there's some issue or potential issue there. So if we're going to deal with this, deal with it comprehensively and, you know, it sounds to me like it, it's leading to at least consideration of the issue of whether or not animals at all need to be allowed at certain events.
Right, I mean, there, there are plenty of events out there. You know, we had one this past weekend over at Pets Mark. There are plenty animal-friendly events that are in this community and that's where the animals need to be. I'm perfectly fine with that. But there are certain events also that are too heavily congested, that involve too, other many factors like food and congregation of too many people in a small area. I won't say too many people, but forty thousand people in, in a small area is too many for a dog. There are things like that that need to be considered in this. And if we're going to make a revision to the ordinance, I would, I'm just making the recommendation, maybe we make one revision instead of multiple.
Or at least that they match in multiple areas because this does talk about special events.
Right, we're not doing anything that affects barbecue anyway. I mean, we're, so, I don't know what the timeframe is here, but we could certainly delay it and I could put some people on it to do some research.
So, okay.
It's, it's some very progressive cities in this country don't even discuss muzzles. I, I mean, Austin, Texas, Portland, Oregon, National Tennessee, and they don't even discuss it?
Owensboro and Bowling Green.
Why would we be all wound up by, I mean, they feared out of way. I guess we're just a lot smarter than they are. Is that what we're saying?
Well, I don't think that may be what we're saying. Maybe they don't have a dog ordinance at all. Maybe they just deals with animals in general.
They do, but they just, they don't have, they don't muzzle the dogs.
From my perspective, I'm not worried about the muzzle as much as I am the ordinance at permitted events.
I would say let's move ahead with this and if there's some overarching bite snakes and vicious bunny rabbits, we'll find, we can deal with that if we need to.
Rabbit, jag rabbits.
I'll never forget, I've been in Doctor's Child, of course.
In search of, you know, in search of Holy Grail, the attack of the rabbits.
I would make sure that, and this unfortunately did happen and was brought to the kennel club's attention, that everyone knows that it is against federal law to turn away a service dog, which is not a therapy dog. It's not, but it is a service dog. And you cannot make them be muzzled and you cannot turn them away from anywhere. So that's the exemption to this and I know you all know that, but that did happen in Paducah. Lot of years ago, but it did happen. So that's, that's the exception to it. But I agree. I mean, I, you certainly have, and I spoke to some other members of the kennel club. They also agree that the muzzle ordinance is, is not a good one. It's not a good one for the city and it's not a good one for the dog. But we do need more public education about what. I think people maybe come into town and don't understand what it is from the dog's point of view when you're in a crowded area in the heat and there's a hundred and fifty thousand pounds of pig meat cooking. I mean, that's a really. I mean, that's a really stressful situation for a dog and apparently a bunny. Maybe he thought it was his relatives, I don't know, but, um, so, I, that's what I can contribute.
Thank you.
Thank you for coming.
Okay, city managers report.
Thank you. About a week and a half, two weeks ago, I ran across, uh, Mark Workman of Bacon Farmer Workman, their consulting engineer working on our riverfront project and, uh, I mentioned him that it would be nice if we had some pictorial views of the riverfront project in its current state and, and scratched his head and said, I, I think I can get that for you. So, um, BFW was kind enough to produce a short video, I believe with the use of a drone, uh, that we want to show tonight and Rick will make some comments. That shows the status of the riverfront development project, uh, as of last week, I believe, and Rick will point out, uh, what's occurred since that time, but the nice thing about this, not only does it show the tremendous amount of progress that's been made, but you will see that, uh, there's a lot of definition to the project and this video also gives you, uh, a panoramic shot that shows how, how it looks in association with other landmarks in that area, including the new hotel that's under construction.
Mayor Commission, you can see a lot of your revetment, uh, that is complete, is, in this particular time, you can't quite tell, uh, how all that's going to come out, but you can see the enormity of this project, uh, stretching out into the Ohio River. You see the soil, uh, that is being capped over, uh, the rock that has been placed for the stability of the project. The area that's directly above the revetment there, that stone that has a beige tint to it there at the steps, uh, that revetment will go up to the top of that first set of steps and then there's an area there that's still yet to receive a lot of soil and, uh, vegetative cover, uh, but.
The river's very low here.
Yeah, the river is, is down as a result of what we've heard about Dam Fifty-Two, but it kind of gives you a vista of what that project is on our Paducah Riverfront. See where this goes. I don't know how well you can see the, uh, piles and the piles that are downstream, those will be the anchoring devices for the, uh, transient dock to come and then those pile groupings will be, uh, the anchoring support for the, uh, there, that's a better angle there. You can see, it looks like a line of fence posts, that's where your transient dock will be. You can also see how the landmass protects that transient dock. Just kind of got given credits at the end of the movie, you can't read them as fast anymore. The, uh, the river bottom footprint of this project is about six acres. The usable space will be about three and a half to four acres there and, uh, I would invite, uh, any of you all to walk down to the site. There's a lot more revetment that's in place, uh, today. You see that track hole, um, uh, I guess, boom, right at the top of the steps, that's where the revetment is today. You can see where they're building the right-hand side of that, they have the left-hand side complete, they have all of it complete and now we're coming with the soil on top of this. I'm glad that there's a man there wearing orange, uh, it kind of give you some scale of the project as well. Where that pickup truck is, that white pickup truck is, uh, at the southern end of the Schultz Park. This is where our project joins that portion of Schultz Park that will be part of our Trail Phase Five, I believe, uh, that we will be pursuing in the future. Greenway Trail Phase Five.
Rick, what happens to the trees that are downstream of the Gangway?
Actually, uh, Commissioner Rhodes, that's something that, uh, we're looking at, uh, the city manager and myself and also our Parks Director. You see how clean that is, uh, brand-new construction with nature and the river, uh, rising and falling. It will be difficult to, um, keep the vegetation knocked down, but we've discussed as, as late as, I mean, as early as today, uh, we need to establish a program that we can be proactive in keeping that looking that way. There are, uh, retardants that you would spray, uh, and then there's also, as we clean up the riverfront, we need to, uh, uh, remove some of the vegetation that's there. Some of it's good, some of it not so good. It's going to be pretty interesting when the project's complete, uh, there will be, I, I'm anticipating that there will be all kinds of new programming, uh, on our riverfront as we continue to, I guess, persevere, uh, with, uh, our projects there. Any questions?
Want to thank Mark Workman for doing that for us.
Drones are cheaper than airplanes. And helicopters.
I was down there one day and there were two, uh, people out in the river in kayaks and I'm sure that was a, a real bird's eye view from, from that level to see the project moving along. Commissioners, you have anything tonight? Do we have an executive session?
We do.
Okay, Commissioner Wilson, you have that?
I move that the board go into closed session for discussion of matters pertaining to the following topic, issues which might lead to the appointment dismissal or disciplining an employee as permitted by KRS six one point eight one oh LF.
Second.
City Clerk?
Mr. Abraham?
Aye.
Mr. Gault?
Aye.
Mr. Rose?
Aye.
Mr. Wilson?
Aye.
Mayor Taylor?
Aye, so we will not be coming back. Meeting's adjourned.